Let's go to the consent agenda. Is approval of consent agenda, will the city clerk please read consent agenda items, 3.1 and 3.2 by title only, please?
3.1, approval of minutes, 3.2, approve the recommended appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Can I have a motion? Oh, does anyone in the council, we have any speaker cards? This is a different meeting here.
No, Mayor.
All right. Anybody in council want to remove an item? All right, then could I have a motion a second to approve 3.1 and 3.2 on the consent agenda?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilor Pizzillo and a second from Councilman Lortano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Roy, I didn't start with this. Can I go ahead and do it? Okay, great. So, I want to take a moment just to explain something to you and for the public too. So, I'd like to take a moment to explain to the public about the setup of tonight's special meeting. As our city continues to experience rapid growth, our city staff strives to provide the best customer service and to help our businesses streamline their processes and to ensure we do not delay their timelines. Tonight is one of the rare occasions that we combine three meetings into one special meeting in order to be efficiently and properly, and efficiently and properly vote and discuss the items. As outlined in the city charter, a councilperson is required to attend or request an excusa for the regular meeting, regular council meetings. However, I would ask that you consider a future ballot measure to include work sessions and special meetings in the city charter. This is a prime example of why these meetings should be included, because we are voting and discussing important topics all in one meeting, although tonight is not a regular meeting. Business is being conducted. As members of council, our community is trusting that we are committed to serving for the betterment of our community, and we need to be present for these discussions, especially at a time when our staff is working tirelessly to keep up with the city's growth. I would like to discuss the possibilities of changing the city charter to include work sessions, special meetings as part of our attendance requirement, and we'll be placing the item on the council retreat agenda this fall. Thank you. All right, let's go on to the next one in the business. I'd like to remind council to wait until there's a motion on the table for any questions or discussion. The next item is to consider adopting Resolution 2019-1964 to approve the development agreement, Phoenix 70. Rebecca Zook, presentation. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm happy to be here this evening seeking approval for the second development agreement with Microsoft, also known as Phoenix 70, for the parcel located at the southeast corner of Indian School and Citrus. The agreement is similar to the one brought forward to council on February 25th and again on April 22nd as an amended and restated agreement. The focus of... Thank you, Julie. The focus of both agreements deals with Microsoft's need for an accelerated construction schedule to meet industry demand. The parcel covered by this agreement is approximately 145 acres and is located within the PB 303 planned area development and has an underlying designation of I-1 light industrial. The water provider for that particular site is Epcor, and the sewer provider is Liberty Utilities. The city is working with both of these entities in conjunction with Microsoft as the project moves forward. The city is willing to allow Microsoft to move forward at an accelerated schedule for the construction of its first building and associated onsite engineering work under a self-certification process in exchange for Microsoft waiving any claims they may have against the city and indemnifying the city for claims by third parties related to the city allowing Microsoft to proceed in this fashion. These are all similar statements to what were made with the first agreement. The property owner has been advised of the risks, including the risks associated with the third-party agency providing water and wastewater services, and they are aware that the city of Goodyear is not providing those services. We anticipate the approval of the Phoenix 70 site plan tomorrow, and in addition, we will be issuing a mass grading permit this Wednesday on May 8th. With that, I request approval of the Phoenix 70 development agreement, and I'm open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience want to speak? The client? No? The applicant? Yes?
Mayor and members of council, for your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Lager for The Applicant, and I just wanted to thank you for your leadership in allowing them to develop both of these sites and then for your staff's incredibly hard work. We are incredibly grateful for such a wonderful partnership with the city of Goodyear.
Well, thank you very much. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1964 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1964, approving the development agreement for Phoenix 70, directing the city manager to execute the development agreement for Phoenix 70, authorizing and directing actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-1964? Do I hear that motion?
To move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Hannan. Open for council discussion. Did you know?
Sure, I'll talk.
Go ahead. Councilman Hannan?
Yeah, no, I think it's another good example of the self-certification process, and I'm glad that we're trying it out and using it to help further the projects that are important to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right, are we ready? Do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to 4.2. The item is a workshop that requested by council regarding overgrown weeds. Christopher Baker, Development Service Director, will be presenting. Christopher?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight as a result of council requests to discuss weeds, code compliance, and also to review code compliance data regarding weeds. Our three-person code compliance team works diligently in partnership with many other city departments and outside agencies to help maintain an attractive and desirable city. And so, tonight, what I wanted to do is walk through, there we go, several different topics. There is five, to be exact. We will also provide a recommendation, a policy recommendation, and of course, allow time for mayor and council to ask any questions. Tonight, we're going to discuss what are overgrown weeds and how they are defined in Goodyear, how we compare to our typical valley benchmarks cities and jurisdictions. We're going to discuss how much actual weed case activity there is and has been since 2015, highlight what a typical code enforcement process is, and then conclude with how the newly adopted repeat offender process we anticipate will help with weed cases and also typically other code enforcement cases as well. So, to begin with, the city of Goodyear defines weeds as overgrown when there are six inches in height and above. And as you can tell from this chart or graph, graphic, excuse me, chart, that we compare very favorably and in line with most of our other jurisdictions in the valley. Gilbert is a noticeable outlier as they define it a little bit differently. And what's unique about that is if you think about a given parcel of property, is that around the perimeter of a site, there could be excessively overgrown weeds, but it would not necessarily constitute 25% of the property, and it would not be a violation. So, they have a much different determination. Not only that, but you'll notice their definition of height is 10 inches as opposed to six, so they allow them to grow a little bit taller. Avondale is also an outlier, an exception to the six-inch height rule that's typical in the valley, and they empower their four code officers to make discretionary calls about when to enforce weed complaints. And that is because they, several years ago, they changed their weed ordinance. Previously, it was six inches, just like ours in many of the other jurisdictions, but they deleted that to create this empowerment and discretion because they wanted to be able to handle weeds that grow in a horizontal fashion, not just in a vertical fashion. So, this graph intends to show an apple-to-apple comparisons of the number of new weed cases and the amount of rain that we've received in January and April of 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19. As you can tell, there is a correlation of rain to the amount of new weed cases, and it is important to note that weeds lag with rain due to growth time. And although 2019 was very wet overall in January through April of 2.83 inches of rain, in January, it was very dry. In January of this year, we only experienced .74 of an inch of rain. So, that has had the effect of pushing prime weed season later in the spring this year. So, that is one of the contributors to why that in 2019, we've only had 411 weed cases so far. In addition to this, Code is actively working with our communications department to start increasing education about weeds and when violations can take place through both in focus and our various social media platforms. So, this is a typical code enforcement process. It begins with the first inspection, which is a result of either proactive patrol or a complaint, and if there is an issue, an advisory notices issued to the property owner. An advisory notice is an educational opportunity that we seek to just say, this is what city code is, and you have an issue here, would you please rectify it? They schedule a second inspection 10 days later, two weeks later. It's 10 working days, two calendar weeks later. They go back out, and if it's not resolved, they issue a notice of violation. Again, they schedule a follow-up 10 working days later, go out, and if it's not resolved, they issue a final notice. Then they also go out for a fourth time. If it's not resolved at that point in time, a citation is issued, which then cascades to city court approximately 30 to 45 days later. So, as you can tell, Code can work a case for six weeks and then still issue a citation, and then it still go to court. If an owner complies and brings their property into compliance at any time prior to citation, then typically the case is closed, and there's no further enforcement activity takes place. So, as you can tell from this graph, which obviously has citations and weed cases both on it, I tried to overlay them, but the scale was off and it was very difficult to read, so we thought this may be a little bit easier for council to see. As you can tell, the number of citations versus the number of weed cases in January through April of 2015 through 19, the number of citations is very low compared to the number of weed cases opened. And what this means is that our three-person code team achieves voluntary compliance nearly all of the time. So, we do not issue a whole lot of citations. They typically do come into compliance voluntarily by working with them. So, what improvements have been made with Code? Well, most notably is the repeat offender provision that council approved on December 3rd of 2018. That became effective in January of 2019. And essentially, the synopsis is if you have a violation on your property, in this case weeds, and you get a notice of the violation, if you have a weed problem on that same property within two years, Code can immediately issue a citation. So, that virtually, well, does eliminate that entire six-week process. You just get a citation and you go to court. It's also important to note that Code's experiences, that most vacant property in the city that has weed issues is frankly not monitored by the property owners because they typically do not reside in the city limits. They simply rely on Code to advise them of when they need to have some property maintenance. So, what's our policy recommendation? To let the repeat offender provisions fully implement on weed cases, and we'll monitor the time to compliance. Since that new portion of the code, the repeat offender, became effective in January, we've really only been through one cycle of weed growth. And so, since the code officers with that second violation will be able to immediately go to citation, we expect a drastic change in behavior of property owners and maintenance cycles. So, what we're proposing is to monitor the number of cases, the number of citations, and the time to compliance, and then report that back to council in the fall of 2019. And with that, mayor and council, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Nice presentation. Questions? Sherri?
My question is, is this primarily like call-in resident-driven, or is this primarily driven by our three people who drive around, or how do we find most of the violations?
That's a great question, and unfortunately, I don't have those exact statistics to be able to answer that for you currently. Be happy to get back with council and answer that with absolute data, but it's a combination of both proactive and complaint basis.
Okay.
I'll be happy to follow up.
No, I was just curious what the percentage was on those.
Joe?
On part of it, I drive around and pick some of that stuff up.
Oh, so we have four.
Yeah, you have four. To me, there's two issues, okay? I understand dust control. So, if you've got unimproved property and you've got a field, I can see six inches of weeds, okay? Because you don't want the dust and the dirt and the erosion. To me, that makes sense. But when it gets into the right-of-way, I personally kind of like Avondale's approach because there's a lot of these low-growing weeds, especially if it's an improved area. To wait till it gets six inches by then, they're really unsightly. So, I see two different areas. I see one that try to prevent the erosion and the dust, and I see another around our right-of-way where the roads, because when I was driving around some of the areas, especially over around the Harkins, whatever, you had some of them where the weeds were actually growing over into the street. And to me, the right-of-way is kind of critical because you want that patch, whatever it is, how many feet off of the road, to be somewhat clean, you know, as you go through there. From an economic development standpoint, I personally would like to see our city with that perception of a city that's on its way up, not on its way down. And I don't, I can't tell you how many times I get positive comments from visitors who go through our cities because of how well we maintain our right-of-way and how well we maintain our vacant lots. They think this is a brand-new city because they're used to the overgrown, they're used to some of the trash, they're used to some of the tall weeds. So, I think it says a lot for our city to try to maintain that as pristine as possible, especially when we're trying to recruit businesses that want to come into our lovely city. So, again, I see two pieces in there, and I see where the right-of-way, I kind of like where Avondale's going, but the others, I can see the six because you don't want dust, you know, so that helps maintain that. So, that's my kind of two cents worth.
Brandon?
What's the end result of the citation?
Brandon, you have to get close to that.
What's the end result of the citation? Is it fine or a lien or?
Yes, typically, it is a, the judge can secure a fine for the violator. That's correct. So, it's fine. We do have abatement rights. If somebody is, goes through that court cycle, found guilty, we can and have used code budget in order to clean private property, and then we place a lien on that property to recover the cost when it's sold. That is, frankly, the code budget is not huge for abatement, and we use that pretty sparingly because a typical residential lot, for example, is $700 to $800 to abate. We've abated some in a community north of the interstate here this past summer, or actually past spring, and it was about $4,000. So, we typically try and use, keep that money in reserve and work with property owners to achieve compliance.
And during that process, do we ever, and I thought there was some, maybe the community development department or with Christina, I don't know if there's, I thought there were some churches or things that were offering support for, if people were getting close to that requirement, that they were able to help them in some way?
So, there are some, mayor, council, there are some community organizations that do provide support to our residents who are not capable financially or physically in order to maintain their property and compliance with the code. When that does happen, and it has happened, and it happens every year, we do put them in touch with those organizations. Each one of those organizations has different standards that they vet that request from to see if they will in fact help them, but typically, it does get resolved through our partners in the private sector, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Sherri?
I have one more follow-up question. You may not have the information on this either. Is this mostly we're dealing with homeowners, or are we dealing with larger, more industrial, like absentee owners who own land here? Because I think what Joe was saying was a good point. I think I see that mostly on some of your larger undeveloped parcels as opposed to the homeowners where it's really getting into the right-of-way, so.
Mayor, council, yes, ma'am. So, typically, if you remember that statistic I tossed out, 80% of our weed cases are violations, and most of those are vacant, larger parcels of property. We do have lots of weed violations on residential, so about 20%, which is a pretty sizable number if you think about the overall number of weed cases. So, and those are typically vacant homes or homes being, that are trying to be sold that nobody's really maintaining very well, or rental property. So, we do work very diligently. And if we have a reoccurring issue on a rental property, not only do we communicate with the rentor, but we also communicate with the property owner in order to make sure they know what's going on with their property.
And then do we have a tool that we can use for the cases like Joe brought up where it's going into the right-of-way? It may not be six inches, but it's kind of like seeping into the right-of-way area. Do we have a way to get that to that property owner's attention as it sets now?
Yeah, so we treat that the same way. That's a violation just as if it was on the backside of your property that we...
Well, if it's not six inches, how you saying that's kind of like, they kind of grow down and...
Oh, horizontally?
Kind of like a vine almost, yeah.
Horizontally, currently, we don't. It's the vertical, that's how we define it currently, is the vertical six inches in height.
Holly, do you have something?
I do.
Go ahead.
I just wonder if there might be a possibility that we amend our ordinance to include weeds that grow low down and they block the sidewalks. To me, that's a health hazard of people trying to walk on the sidewalks. I don't know how many, we actually have that, but I noticed there are an awful lot of weeds around the property of McDowell and Bullard in 150th, and that's such a high-traveled area that it really is troublesome to think that the owners of all of those separate properties are not maintaining them like they should. I can see them not chopping down the weeds in the middle of the field, but along the right-of-way, absolutely. And I just thank Code for all that they do, and we just have to be really vigilant with it.
Yes, ma'am. And mayor, council, if I may, I think that one of the properties you're referring to, Vice Mayor, is actually owned by the Flood Control District.
It is.
And they have already been given a notice.
Very good. I do know that there are some HOAs in our city that they do their own weed abatement to the tune of $100 if you don't get your weeds out within 30 days. But not all of them do that, and then some of them just let it go. So, maybe perhaps when we have our Make a Difference Day, we do a bigger emphasis on helping those that need yard duty rather than some of the other things we do, or expand and try to get more volunteers that will help us for that particular time. I believe that's in October.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Code. I have to say, over the years, the Code Department has really improved, all right? So, I think they work hard at this. Have we ever thought about trying to contract our ladies of Perryville? Since they do some of our landscaping, and it certainly would give them a little more earning money, a little more experience.
So, mayor, council, thank you. We have partnered with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office with the chain gang very, quite effectively on a lot of the situations that the vice mayor was talking about, like right next to the sidewalk. They have been going through a restructure, and so we have not been able to utilize their services for the last couple of months because we did in fact reach out to them at the beginning of the year to see if they could help us. So, we are hopeful that we'll be able to continue our relationship with them, but I'll also share with you that the sheriff's office has some definite policies about where the chain gang, and this would also be with Perryville if they could do it, where the chain gang can be deployed because of the safety. They don't go by schools and things of that nature. So, there are specific areas of the community I know that would, they would not be able to assist us with. But yes, ma'am, to your point, we do partner with the sheriffs and the chain gang in order to help us.
All right, great. As long as you're still looking at using them and...
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit more. Joe, would you have another question?
No, I'm just kind of curious from my fellow councilmembers on here if there's any interest in maybe taking a look at the right-of-way, the low-growing weeds that grow over into the right-of-way as opposed to having to be six inches because, you know, as Councilmember, you know, Wally was mentioning there, that's just as bad and the way it looks on our community when that happens to filter into the right-of-way or onto the sidewalks, and they may not be six inches tall. There may be those type of weeds that just kind of roll over.
Mayor, if I may, if there is weeds, whether or not they're vertical or horizontal, that are growing over a sidewalk that presents a tripping hazard, we certainly want to know about it because we do, out of public safety, can take care of it from that perspective, if that answers your question.
Well, the other card I would have, if it's right-of-way issue, at what level six inches is? What, about that tall? Okay, that's pretty tall if it's got stone and it's already semi-improved and the weeds are starting to pop up about that tall. It's only a matter of time before it gets to that. It'd be a lot easier if it was addressed at that level than at that level. So, I still think there's an advantage to taking a look at the right-of-way from a height standpoint, trying to maintain it, especially since we're trying to recruit all these businesses, and we want to make sure we have that pristine-looking city. And to me, six inches is pretty tall in the right-of-way, especially between the sidewalk and the road. So, you know, I just wonder if anybody's got some interest in maybe kind of scaling that down, at least in the right-of-way area.
I do. I see some nodding heads.
Sure. Okay.
All right.
Mayor, council, if I may, also add one additional thing is, you know, we're, we do really appreciate the collaboration that we receive from other city departments in helping us address these issues. Sometimes we work with parks, sometimes it's with streets and things of that nature. So, everybody works together to try and make it the most beneficial and, you know, well-kept city in the valley. So, thank you.
Well, please extend our thanks, and I guess we're a little short on giving thanks to some things that we're unaware of, and so we greatly appreciate their efforts.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
And thanks for the information. I think, I know Joe, this is with a hot button for him, and so I think for everybody, but you focused on it, and I appreciate, and that's why we have the presentation tonight.
But I do appreciate all the efforts that the staff does on this because, again, time and time again, by visitors from out of state, just, you know, pride, you know, just the compliments on how well our city looks. I just like to keep it like that, especially as we start to grow down here on the West Valley, that's pristiness. I mean, and our residents are so proud of the way it looks, and I'd like to make sure we continue down that path. And I know staff's doing a good job doing, staying on top of that because I hear calls from me all the time about that. So, and you guys move pretty quick resolving those issues, and I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, I've noticed even on the land that has been turned over now, we know it's going to be developed, there's that period of time before they do it, they really, it does get to look... Yeah, it does. ...pretty narrowly. So, anyway, but thanks a lot. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, mayor.
All right. All right, we're going to move on. This is the new way. We're going to move on to an executive session. So, council upon roll call vote, may convene an executive session as posted. So, I need a motion and a second to go in executive session. Don't give it to me yet. And on 4.3 pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 and 4, for discussion and consultation for legal advice with the city attorney, city manager, to consider its position and instruct its representatives regarding agreements for economic development opportunities. And 4.4 pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1, for discussion with the city attorney regarding his annual performance evaluation. So, is there a motion a second to go in executive session? Do I hear that motion?
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will now convene an executive session.